I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under the government of the free and equal liberty of the people.
Okay, thank you for coming. We, a little housekeeping here. We have the exit over here, back of the room, and the one you came in. The agenda is on the table over here. Hope everyone signed in. Next item up will be to have you silence your cell phones, smartwatches, and all the other good doodads you might have, so you don't interrupt proceedings. We'll be following the rules and procedures adopted by this board January 3rd of 2024. The mics, we're gonna be very careful to try to use the mics tonight up here. And we'll have the applicant try to use the mic over there. When I turn on the mics, remember, as I said before, all conversations will be picked up once I turn the mics on in the general audience area. So, alright, with that, next item up is approval of the meeting minutes, which we cannot do, correct? Or, oh, yeah, we have us three here. Okay. So everybody get a chance to review the minutes. Everybody okay with them? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? Motion by Tim, second by Doug. Any other comments? All in favor, say if I was saying aye. Okay, aye. Okay, we're good there. Legal notices were published in the Daily Messenger. Okay, order of business PB 0702-23 preliminary three lot subdivision for the Fowler Family Trust. Jim, you wanna kinda come up here and use the mic there and just kinda tell us what's changed since the last time? I know we're reviewing some data. Perfect. Okay, alright. Ron?
Just for the record, the previous public hearing, there was a information submitted by a realtor and also by Jim on behalf of Mr. Baker.
Right.
And we asked for more detailed information. We received it at the end of, towards the end of last week. We haven't had an opportunity to review it, neither have you. And so that's why we're here, to continue the public hearing.
Right, so we're gonna kick it out to, what date were we doing that to?
June 5th.
June 5th, that's what's in here somewheres. Let's find, but June 5th, okay. And, Tim, engineering?
I'm good.
Okay, this is a public hearing continuation on the Fowler Family Trust three lot subdivision. Do I have anyone here to speak for or against the application? Again, we're gonna continue this to June 5th. Anybody have any comments? Anybody have any additional comments? Okay, anybody online have any comments? Anybody online have any comments for or against this project? Okay, anyone on the board? Okay, we have a, we have a resolution that continues the public hearing and to June 5th. Okay, anyone have any comments? Have a motion to approve the resolution as presented, weigh the reading? Moved by Doug, seconded by Tim. Any other comments? Clerk take a roll call vote, please.
Usha, aye.
Kelpie, aye.
Aye. Okay, we continue that one out to June 5th and hopefully we'll be able to tie some things up and get things moving on that. Thank you, Jim. Appreciate it. Okay, next item up, we have six, no, four items. We have two preliminary site plan approvals PB 0408-24, PB 0409-24, and two special use permits, PB 0406-24 and 04-07-24, all for Sky Solar. Okay, do we have anybody here from Sky Solar? Come on down. We're gonna ask you to stand right behind the podium, because I got a feedback that you can't hear you if you're not right behind a podium. Oh. And we'll just kinda cover what's changed and what additional information's been provided and what you guys have done. Everybody here, I believe, has seen the initial stuff. I think we'll go from there and then turn it to staff, do the public hearing. And our resolutions tonight are to continue the application again to do some additional work on the environmental record, so. Alright. There we go. Okay, go ahead and introduce yourselves and tell us what's been going on.
Frank Burford from Sky Solar.
Okay, Frank and Emily. Yep. Yep.
One of the comments we took away was about noise. Identify where the noise sources are and calculate the noise that would be at the project.
Yeah, so we don't have the figure together yet to show them that'll be ready in a couple days.
Perfect.
As far as the locations of where noises, I mean, they're mostly at on the concrete pads, off of the site, and in the battery area where the transformers and are, and there are several locations throughout the site where there's inverters that are at the ends of the roads. So, those locations been pointed and decibels that the manufacturer authorized in their data sheets, we were able to determine how far away or where, what is it, a property line is pretty much where, what we went to.
Right.
So, based on the locations, everything is around, I think it was 65 decibels, I think each. I don't know, it'll be the same. And so that was reduced to between 29 and 23 decibels at property line, depending which is a clinch like a whisper or a refrigerator, and that does not account for anything like trees or anything else that's in that sound.
And we have, how many feet of trees are we leaving there? Remind me? It's close to 100 feet, I thought, yeah, okay.
So that's like absolute worst case.
Right. Cool. Okay, well that'd be good information to get, we all appreciate it. Okay, let's turn it over to Ron.
Yeah, there's two things tonight for you. One is administrative. We have completed the 30-day public review and coordinated review period with the involved agencies.
Correct.
And you are, no objections have been received, you being designated lead agency.
Right.
We have a draft resolution doing that. And we also, in that resolution, have continuation to June 19th or the next public hearing on this, at which time you will receive the drafts of parts two and three of the state's environmental review record. And, and we will continue the public hearing on second resolution tonight to that June 19th date, so that everybody has the opportunity to review that record and to comment on that as part of the public hearing.
Cool, okay. Thank you very much. Dan?
Yeah, Ron summed up the procedure very well. And again, there's a lot going into this. Due to all the comments that we received at your last meeting, staff is taking a hard look at every comment that was received to this board as we review the environmental, so that we can give you a full report back as we, if this board seeks fit for us to draft parts two and three.
Right. And remind the residents where the part two and three will be posted once it's drafted and ready for us, will be posted on the website, correct?
Correct, everything will be.
Public review?
The same spot that we put the resolutions on our website, they will be available there. They are always available here at the town hall. If anybody ever wants a hard copy, they're more than welcome to come in and see that as soon as we post them to the website.
And residents can go online to New York State and look at the actual part two and three of the environmental record, which is what the form is that staff will be working with the planning board to prepare. So if you have any interest in, in going to sleep early, where you can read the environmental form that needs to be completed and there's questions about everything that could possibly be environmental on there, and we'll go through each question and go, and answer each question. Correct?
Correct.
Highway?
Not really much to add.
Yeah, right. I know there was some, you delineated some of where the roadway would be. So we, so the residents and staff and the board could actually see where the actual road was proposed within the guidelines of what you have from that, okay? So, yeah, I really don't have a good thing there. Alright, engineering?
We have been working through the review. I haven't received anything additional from the agencies other than what town staff has identified. I'm anticipating receiving the noise study or the analyst that's being provided. Upon receiving of that, we'll finish our letter and we'll send it in as part of the record for this review.
Right, and did we get any comments on the environmental from any of the agencies?
The Department of Environmental Conservation did respond. They do not object to the designation of lead agency.
Right.
And they boiler-plated all of the other standard comments that they normally make.
Well, okay, alright, just wanted to make sure. Okay, this is a public hearing. As we said before, I'm gonna turn on the mics in the room. And then we're gonna go around, get your feedback. Again, the focus of this phase of what we're doing is the environmental record. If you have comments or concerns or issues on the environmental record, that would be what we're looking for. But it is a public hearing, so you can give us anything you guys want, so. Alright, so open to public. Yes, ma'am. Name and address and address everything to me.
This is Willard 6011 Redfield, and I'd like to know what the noise is going to be from the road.
Well, I, staff, that's part of what we'll look at, it's part of the environmental record, that's part of what we will look at.
They only address the solar.
I know, that's all they can do. It's their putting in a road, but they are not necessarily responsible for the road, it's not their bailiwick. That's that's for staff and I and the board to address. Okay? I think that answers that question. I mean, well, it's, it's the answer you don't wanna hear, but it is the factual answer for projects that we do. Anything else, ma'am, before I move on? Sir?
John Costanza, 6022 Redfield Drive.
Hey, John.
Can I approach the map over there and stroke? It'll make.
And as long as you address all your questions to me.
No problem.
And remember, you're at, you're providing information to us, you're not speaking to the crowd. Correct, okay.
So, the proposal, as we see it, as we were here the last time, you know, you got in here for. And if the town is really going to go through with this proposal, I hope you'll consider an alternative, because I think it's part of our, our community concern along with the growth of the, of, 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 um, environment to give you alternate suggestions.
Okay.
Okay, first one I would make would be instead of the road being, going where it's proposed, go back this way, rather than put an S curve in the road, which is gonna be dangerous for everyone, including people driving. This is a very quick way of going up this road.
Will it stay on the existing property?
Actually, you have a right of way, I believe, on this property.
So it doesn't stay on our, on the current applicant's property, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make that as a point.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's kind of a disadvantage for the town.
Okay.
The second one would be zoning. I think was the new road that, that I proposed going in here and the HOA proposes, the residential and commercial zoning will stay separate. So we'll be in the residential, as you go over here, this will be commercial.
Receive your feedback?
Yeah. Next thing I would do is to put a curve in the existing road, the way the, it's proposed right now, is it would take less time and money to make this shortcut that I'm proposing than to actually build this road.
Okay.
Because, and driving it will be a heck of a lot easier, too. Maintaining it will be a heck of a lot easier. Snow plowing it will be a heck of a lot easier. You know, right here, you're in people's backyard, but on the other side of the wooded area, you know, the, there will be less noise, there's gonna be less heavy traffic, less commercial traffic than going down here. And we've seen in our neighborhood that big commercial trucks are coming down Redfield Drive. I mean, they're, they're pushing the envelope just a little bit, and I think if this goes in, we're pushing the envelope a lot and, and causing a lot of danger to the residents there, because if a truck has an accident or tips over, we know it's not gonna just tip over like this, we know it's gonna move. And if it moves, you're gonna be, that tractor trailer and all the shrapnel that goes with it is gonna be in the residents' homes. You know, somebody's gonna get hurt here.
And that is the proposal you shared with town staff?
Right.
Okay.
But I just wanna make sure that, that you guys hear it as well.
Appreciate it.
The proposed alternative, as I said, would be easier to maintain, it's a gentle curve, it's easier to drive. I know from being a driver, a teacher, you know, being on an S curve, what would you rather negotiate? You know, this is a heck of a lot harder to negotiate than it would be, you know, going this way. Other, I have a couple more things. I think the new proposal that I'm giving you tonight would help preserve the equity in our homes. It would also accomplish the town's plan of connecting Redfield Drive. And if, if we keep it like this, I mean, people's equity is gonna be destroyed in our houses. You know, we, you know, we got in here full last time about the equity, and as you all know, if, you know, we have a, you know, a big commercial surface that we are, it's bound to destroy people's equity in homes. With the new plan that I'm proposing tonight, along with the HOA, there'll be more green space, there's gonna be more nature. These woods here are not going to be destroyed, they're gonna be left for people to enjoy and the animals for their habitat. I think the space here with the green space will be a nice buffer that, you know, we can use instead of having this proposal, that green space will help buffer the noise of some of those trucks and cut that down. Security is gonna be an issue as well. In this type of situation, anybody could park along here, run into a house, do a smash and grab and take off. This, they're not even thinking about this, because this is just, and the commercial traffic, you're around, you're going around the neighborhoods. So, I, I think to sum it up, I think here are the advantages of the plan that I want, that, that I want for you guys tonight. Is, it takes less resources, provides a better design, preserves green space, makes the road easier to maintain and negotiate, keeps the homeowner safe, preserves the property values, and provides security.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to just add, oh, sorry.
Please.
Lorraine McConnell.
Go ahead.
Lorraine McConnell.
Yep.
Well, Redfield Drive, I would just like to add that with the curve, and if you're gonna have commercial vehicles on that curve, they're gonna have to slow down and speed back up, and the noise would be a factor also if it was more of a straighter line, then the truck can just go through, otherwise, because I've talked to some truck drivers and they say, you know, you've got the air brake going on, they're stopping, you know, they're slowing again, and blah, 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 you know, they gotta go back up again or whatever.
Right.
And, and I did have a question. Is there gonna be any sort of retaining walls or something along this road?
Right now, I don't believe there's anything.
It's just gonna be, it's just planned to be a flat road.
For this moment, we haven't actually got to the design yet, we're still in the environmental section, so we're not to the design yet.
Okay.
Doesn't mean there won't be, doesn't mean there will be, but we're too early in the process to know what we're gonna do. I believe anyway, unless staff tell me I'm wrong.
I can answer that. There, I don't see us anywhere where we need a retaining wall, but there, it will be on an infengment in some areas, just because of topography, but no retaining walls, not anything drastic like that.
Okay, well, I just know that some people have mentioned to me that if there was a tip over or a guy lost a tire or a tire blew out and something swerves over the trailer or something like that, that, does that mean it comes over in my yard, it knocks down a tree, the tree falls in my yard, what, what would happen?
Appreciate feedback, we haven't gotten to that section yet. Just because that's what the applicant's proposing doesn't mean the planning board will agree to that, so we haven't got to that point yet.
Alright, thank you.
Like I said, so I'm not gonna commit either way. Make sure that's on record. We have someone in the back, sir.
Just really quick following up, add to one of the financial.
Offer two seconds.
Mark Mingoya, Howard Hannah Realtor.
Okay.
Represent a couple of the Gradies in 7018, and I also have a listing at 6004 Redfield at the moment. As of last week, I had three proposed offers to us. One was, I had told my, my client that this is our buyer here, and she did some research on what we're seeing here, and just from finding out about the solar fields, the potential noise, they had hearing aids, and we worked on their, the radio frequency for the hearing aids. Well, again, this, it's all about perception, right? So this is all real life.
All on the record.
I ended up with no offers. The people that handed me an offer that I thought was gonna buy the house retracted it simply because of this. So I can speak very much so on the financial application of this.
Okay.
Road going there will destroy the equity in multiple homes, at least 10 families, which, from what I gather, is at least $60,000 of real estate taxes a year, property taxes. I hope the thinking, consider that buffer behind them, because it will destroy the property values. And I sold over $40 million of real estate just last year. And I'm very, very knowledgeable as a professional in this field, and I wanted to share that. It's already had an effect on the sale.
Appreciate your feedback.
Thank you.
Sir?
My name is John Grady, I live at 6018 Redfield Drive. Would you mind if I approached the guidance?
Sure, go ahead.
The where the applicant has proposed to build this solar field and this road, it lies within the major thoroughfare overlay district.
Correct.
Which was adopted on May 18th, 2022 by the, by the town, the community. I'm assuming that the regulations that are outlined in these 25 pages of the MTOD will be divided by?
Always do.
As it pertains to the environment, paragraph six says that the design treatments. Planning boards can self-assure review the scale and design character of proposed building and site designs and require design improvements that are appealing to and in scale with pedestrian neighborhoods whenever possible. It also says, with the site plan approval process, has a number of things which are required writing in MTOD. One of them is fostering designs which are likely to evoke feelings of pride in one's community, fostering the preservation or enhancement of significant views and characteristics of the natural landscape, including topographic and longer course features. And I'd like to remind everybody that this is right next to residential community, there is no buffer and a great portion of it. The design of the site should be undertaken by design professionals who are sensitive to the surrounding landscape views and character of the community. Site and building designs are expected to have cohesive, appealing, standard role design qualities as well as to have design scale and design continuity that allows them to complement and enhance the best traditions of the community. The planning board expects that building and site design professionals will be sensitive to the character of residential areas adjacent to a non-residential site that a seeking site plan approval under these guidelines. In addition, the planning board expects that building and site design professionals will be sensitive to the site improvements, which will also be attractive and appropriate to the character of the adjacent sites.
Yeah, we're very familiar with the MTOD, thank you.
Well, there's, can you confirm?
Can you?
That everything in this, in this MTOD will be invited by most applications?
Considered, certainly. Those are guidelines, they'll all be considered as part of the process. And like I said, we don't need a tutorial on the MTOD, but if you wanna highlight some specific areas.
Everybody here would like to know what those regulations.
You're here to speak to me, you're not here to do a presentation to the residents. You can certainly do that at some other time, but we're here to address the planning board in the process. So I'm sorry, I'm just trying to make sure you understand the purpose of me.
I understand, I agree.
Okay, alright, so if you wanna summarize what else you'd like to say?
These, like, these regulations, which the planning board adopt, states that final grading plans and landscape planning plans shall be prepared and sealed by a licensed landscape architect.
Okay.
Have any plans been submitted to the planning board regarding these landscaping?
We're not quite at that point yet. We are certainly getting to that point, must get this piece done. But I believe that all of the applications are, well, well, definitely that is a piece that we will be looking for when we get to the actual site plan.
Does the application complete at this point?
It's complete enough to do the environmental assessment.
So there's more to be, to be presented, which has not been presented at this time?
We'll have to determine that. That's part of what staff and what's part of the planning board does as we go through the process. We have to address the environmental issues first, then we move into the next phase of when we look at everything. We certainly take public comment into, so we're not closing the public hearing. We close the public hearing, that would be all we could hear from you, and we're not gonna do that. We're going to turn around and keep it open, so that you can continue to provide feedback to us on the application.
I'd like to ask the, the developer, if the road that they're going to be building is an access road or is it an industrial collective? How would you define that?
I'm not sure we classified, I'm not sure staff how we classify that road. Right now, you don't, you wanna?
I'm not sure that, I mean, it's a commercial drive.
Well, there's three, there's three, the town has adopted a site design criteria manual, and that design, site design criteria manual has road cross-sections and street cross-sections. One's private drive, this is not gonna be that. One is a subdivision road, typically in the subdivision of residential nature, this would not be that as well. This is more along the lines of a commercial road slash industrial road.
It's certainly not an access road. This proposal is for an industrial collective. This proposal is for an industrial collective.
Based on industrial road, yeah. It's not going to be a street, a residential street road, yeah. Anything else?
Uh, as far as the environmental comments go, um, regarding. Swinging adjacent to residential zoning. And just to point out that. An earth burn they require, your guidelines that you adopted, requires an earth burn with a minimum height of three feet. And the following plan materials, a minimum of one evergreen tree per each ten meter feet of property.
Hmm.
Adjacent to one of the above listed residential districts, I Z is one of those districts. Once all deciduous or environmental tree per each need fifteen feet of linear property adjacent to one of the above residential districts, and land lies deciduous tree per each forty feet. Is that in the present application?
Hmm, the, I mean, I always. There's a presentation, but we haven't gotten to. We haven't got to that point yet. We're still doing the environmental records. And as we move forward, and the actual site itself or the solar plan will have significant strain for sure.
Is it the intention of the planning board to require the applicant to apply by all of the outlined items?
M T O D is guidelines.
In that, yes.
We appreciate that. We turn, we address that and use that in our deliberations when we discuss the project and we get to that stage, absolutely.
And when would you expect that will happen?
We gotta have, we gotta finish the environmental record first, so it will come after the environmental.
Is any schedule made for that?
No. Can we wrap it up? We try to keep people to about three minutes if we can, so. Let you go much longer than that.
Let me ask you this. At the last meeting, um, you had made the statement that you would like data, backup data.
Hmm.
Why everything that, all the comments that were made to you?
Like any data to help me make decisions, yes.
I have that data.
Okay.
And I'd like to present it to you at the end of the meeting.
We certainly present it to the clerk and we'll turn, make sure we get a copy to everybody. Absolutely.
So I will give you one copy and you will make sure that everybody gets it.
That's the plan.
There's ninety-three pages.
We can take care of that.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else like to speak for or against this application? Ma'am over here, we, she jumped up just before you.
Quick, I didn't see that. Uh, Anne Dunford, six zero zero seven Redfield Drive. Uh, my concerns are the presence of PFAS, PFAS chemicals in the solar panels themselves. And the battery storage facility and the potential for toxic contamination. Especially with the battery storage, if there should be a fire, or the PFAS chemicals heated the drug into groundwater. And for the, um, for the panel, I have several documents that I'd like to get to the clerk for dissemination.
Please do.
One is an overview of the role of PFAS in the production of solar materials.
Hmm.
Then there are several peer reviewed studies about PFAS contamination in drinking water and the impact on human health. The presence of heat islands that are caused by the solar panels themselves. Um, and then a series of things on the safety of the bus systems. I have not been able to find on the town of Farmington. Um, website, their battery storage guidelines or rules and regulations. Um, so I may have just missed them.
I am not sure, I'm not sure we even have anything on that, do we, Ron?
Yeah.
I don't believe we have anything on battery storage.
I am highly concerned about the Farmington Volunteer Fire and EMS services being able to service. Should there be a catastrophic event, uh, with a lithium battery storage facility going up in smoke? And so.
I can, I can address that.
Okay, go ahead, Dan.
We have these already in the township.
Yes, we do.
And the fire department is already trained on them.
It, it's not training necessarily that I'm concerned with. I'm concerned with response times. And when a lithium battery storage facility goes up, it's allowed to burn. And the amount of toxicity that comes from the smoke is documented.
Okay, thank you very much.
So, who do I give these to?
John.
Thank you very much.
And if I could ask, uh, in the presence of everybody here tonight, the previous speaker present the ninety-five pages.
Yeah, you can give them, you can give them to John as well. Okay, while he's doing that, ma'am, you were next.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. I wasn't here in the last meeting. My husband and I are closing.
Amen, Adam.
I'm getting there. My husband and I are closing on six zero zero five Redfield at nine o'clock tomorrow morning.
Okay.
My name's Joanne Pollak. My husband is Scott Pollak. We're leaving Hawthorne. And coming over to Redfield for a calmer, nicer life.
Right.
Getting up there and ready for retirement. And the fact that this is occurring in our little Farmington town, personally, to me, it's disgusting.
Hmm.
Um, and I agree with Ann, as far as the batteries, that was my main concern. And may I perch the mat for a minute?
Certainly.
Thank you. And I appreciated the realtor's comment also, and also the gentleman who wanted to straighten out this road. Looking at this, um, is there any consideration of instead of making it. A road that ends up coming out on commercial, making it a circle? So it's a dead end, really? Coming in from, this is, uh.
Al.
Collat. Coming in from Collat, lack whatever or drop whatever you have that you need to do. Do a circle and go right back out to Collat. Collat has a lot of industrial. I don't understand. Why you are polluting a beautiful area and then it's pollution. The truck, the dirt. I'm across the street. My two sisters live on the other side of the street. Their patio is gonna be dirty. They're gonna hear air brakes. They're going to smell the air brakes. And God forbid, anything happens as far as, as rough that damages to the batteries.
We'll take it into consideration, certainly be part of the discussion as we move forward. Anyone else like to speak for or against this project? Sir.
I'm Scott Pollak, I think, but I just mentioned that. So a couple of things, um, this is gonna be an industrial road as.
Yes.
Someone mentioned. Does that mean this road is open to whomever?
Yes, it's a down road, definitely.
So. Will there be street lights? Will there be police coverage? Will there be?
That'll be street lights, we never.
There are, there are street lights.
There are.
There are. Close, yes.
On the whole road.
Uh, I don't know.
Inside, huh?
On the back.
Oh, on the back.
I think there's some at the crosswalk as well.
So, like she said, we're closing on this property tomorrow morning and, you know, shame on me for maybe not taking this serious a little bit earlier. Um, but this would have definitely affected our decision to make an investment. With the magnitude of, and is this site map available on, on the Farmington's, on the town website?
It's not. Site map is not?
Nope.
Okay, is there, but can we get copies of that site map?
You can absolutely stop here at the down hall and request a copy.
Like I said, just a major concern because I spent a lot of money on this house.
I understand. Anything else, sir?
I'm good right now, but I'll be back for the next one.
And ma'am.
So Robin Finn, sixty twenty. So we now know where the road's going. We've got the little strips that show us exactly where the road is.
Hmm.
The edge of the pavement is literally at our property line. We're unfortunately right at the very beginning. The worst case scenario, that's. So it's right there. So when you look at the top of commercial, it's gonna look like all of our houses are on a median. You've got a road here, a road here, and then these poor sad houses. I appreciate the realtor being here to, to let me know. That's a concern. And I have to say, I don't feel any empathy from you.
I apologize.
And I know that's not your job. I know that's not your role.
Apologize.
You know. Wouldn't it hurt, wouldn't it, it would make us feel a little bit better that somebody's out and he's listening. I feel like it's boo boo boo. And I just.
Ma'am, we've been doing this for so long. I've listened to it. I've listened to you. We will address all of this in the process. Uh, it's the process we've been doing it for the twenty-some odd years I've been doing it. I understand your concerns. I understand your emotions. I've been through it myself in some areas. Um, our role is very simple. It's to do what we can to make the project the best it can. Address situations, address the situation as best we can.
I understand that. I think there are ways for you to do that that might not be so cool.
I'm sorry. Anyone else have any comments in here? Sir, over here.
Uh, Cameron Roden, six oh oh nine Redfield.
Here.
I got a question on the. The proposed road with curve.
Hmm.
Commercial drive currently that, that portion that goes out to Route ninety-six.
Hmm.
The streetlights and the sidewalk are on the eastern side.
Hmm, correct.
You make the curve. Is the sidewalk and the streetlights gonna continue on the eastern side?
Anne.
The sidewalk that's existing up here is on the western side, and instead down here, it's on the eastern side. We currently, and as this isn't still in design, of what we have now, is following on the eastern side all the way up. And then crossing up here with a straight location with a street light at a safe location for a crosswalk. It gets connected to the other side.
So if I understand you, the streetlights and the sidewalk are gonna continue on the eastern side.
Currently, yes.
Take it almost to the end.
Well, I have seen the stakeout of the proposed road. Now you're telling me sidewalk. And streetlights are gonna be, they'll be literally in these people's backyard.
And the curving.
At the curb. I mean, that, the stakes are already up.
Everything on this plan is within either our property or the town's property. Nothing is going on anyone's property while we're here.
Alright, but just a comment, you're gonna be in these people's backyard. The second thing is. The second thing is, if this is an industrial slash commercial road. Why sidewalks? Why, why do they have sidewalks and streetlights? It's an industrial road.
Ron.
The term industrial road is dictating what the pavement cross-section is.
Yeah.
It's just to make sure that it can support any type of vehicles that might traverse that, whereas. In a neighborhood, you're typically looking at more like cars, passenger trucks. It's a different. Uh, design for pavement, just to make sure it's robust enough for the vehicles. It's not. Leaving a flag saying, please, all the semis drive down this road. It's just if a semi drives down, if you wanna make sure that it is able to support the loads. That's what that means. It's not.
Thank you. Okay, someone else started to raise their hand. I thought, and one back there, ma'am.
Hi, Hallat Kristanda, six oh two two Redfield. Um, my only comment is, when the, the road was proposed, when, when commercial drive was started on the two ends. Um, our property was, um, considered industrial.
Right.
And then when Redfield Grove wanted to build homes there, it was changed to, um, residential.
Yeah.
And I think the fact that it now is residential, when. That's totally different than, than what was intended when commercial drive was first set up twenty-one years ago.
Hmm. Appreciate the feedback, thank you. Anyone else here in the room like to make some comments before I turn it on to the, on the line, ma'am?
Daniel Spencer, nine 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 Redfield Drive. What I have in my own comment, I've got a comment. You talk frequently, what you, you do about the process. Part of the, I think part of the communication problem is, we don't know what the process is. So from our perspective, what's happened is this proposal was made at the last meeting. Probably everyone just right over here now was here at the last meeting. Then, for whatever reason, stakes went up. It made it look like, what would that make you think? It makes it look like, what, what, read the road here. And then, but, but there's this environmental part, and then you talk about the design part. But it feels like it's already designed.
So we have some design information, that's correct. The reason that we asked for this staking was so that the residents and staff and the board. Could see the location of the proposed road. That was the purpose for those stakes was only to educate the board, staff, as well as residents. Of where that would go. Uh, you know, I apologize if we didn't make that clear, but the purpose was to help people understand. That's why we did that. The process is.
What goes on then in the design process? Because, again, I think most of us in the room feel like. That these kind of people brought this here, design included.
It is. It is partially designed, but we haven't said our two cents worth into the design. Asked our question, requested any changes that would make it. Fit the way we typically do business. There are a lot of pieces to that. That we still have to do, but we can't do that. Until the environmental record has been established and taken care of, then the process turns to the actual site plan. So it's environmental record first, and then documentation, and there's design documents that we've received. Once we get through, we have to have that to do the environmental. And then when we do the environmental and get that taken care of, then we can actually start looking at. A bunch of the details for the actual design. And the, the environmental is set up in a manner to help the board or boards and staff. Determine what design may be needed or changed as part of this process. That's why it goes environmental first. So they're, they're seeking input from the public, from the agencies, from staff right now. To gather all that information based on this design that's before them now. Only to get to the next step, which is based on that information input received. Concerns and comments raised by staff to help better design and lay out a plan that hopefully mitigates. Or addresses the issues that are being identified today. And as we go forward with the process. Again, we, he says the environmental record, but that, it takes time to go through that process because. They're seeking information until the board feels they've received all that information, they're not gonna move forward with that environmental. They're gonna keep it going until they gathered all the material that they feel is ready for them to then begin review of that design. And potential mitigation and landscaping and guardrails and grading and whether or not this location is better than that location. All of that stuff has yet to be determined because they're trying to get all that information they can to help them assist with that review. Thank you, ma'am.
Anne, I'm sorry, add one more point that I do have.
Ma'am, six zeros.
Aim again, so he can get it on.
Pollak, six, six zero zero five. I should say one eighty-two Hawthorne right now. I'm really kind of pissed about the Redfield thing. Um, why? Does Farmington want a solar farm? Why? Is it monetary? Is it, you know, we're gonna save on taxes? Who cares? We end up having our grandchildren have, having children.
It's zoned for them. I, town board set up the zoning for it. It's, that's more of a town board question.
So who do I go to for the town board?
Town supervisor.
Okay.
That's why, I mean, you know, it's, it's an authorized special use in this area. That's why, I mean, you know, it's, it's an authorized special use in this area.
You know, you know, why, why would we want it? There's pine field, I believe. Booted down. There's been other towns around. I, I'm thinking of my great grandchildren.
Appreciate it.
You know, and, and I'm sure you have some too. They might live in Farmington. Would you really want them around it?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
No, you wouldn't.
Ma'am?
And then third, six zero zero seven Redfield Drive. Just a quick point of information if I may. Is there anything that's ever found during the environmental review that would rescind this location of the solar farm within this particular zone?
Depending on how critical the issue was, each question has criticality to it and then you have to go through mitigation. If you find something that's so critical, it can't be mitigated, the answer would be yes. We haven't run into that in many years that I can remember, but it doesn't mean it can't happen. That's the whole point of the environmental review is to look to see where they fall within the scale on the questions and then what is the proposed mitigation for those issues? That's what it's about.
Quick follow-up. Um, will the town be doing core sampling of soil and water in the retention ponds that are located in the Redfield Grove community? So that the Redfield Grove HOA, which has responsibility for the maintenance of those facilities, has baseline so that further down the road, we can determine whether there has been contamination by groundwater seepage, for example, of a PFS.
And would be a question for the planning board. It would be a question for.
The MSO, MS Word Officer.
Which is Dan.
So I compared to our all of the other solar field that we have in Farmington, that soil or soil samples were required on their site. Uh, we would not be giving or requesting that to do on other sites. So if the HOA would like to test their own soils to get a baseline that you're giving right, we're going to test their, or have them give us ground samples of their exact site and they're going to have to monitor their ground. And we would know at that point if there's seepage.
And though, based on part discussions that I may not have followed accurately, is there not water flow from their site into the retention ponds uh, and on the Redfield Grove area?
No, this, and this is nothing to do with what you proposed here. Per D E C laws and regulations, I cannot go dump all my concentrated water onto someone else's property behind what I'm proposing. Everything here is either contained, going through a treatment on the site and then following its existing path of flow, which is almost all the way all north. Um, or getting captured and continuing on in the storm system. Nothing is going into those ponds that wasn't already going into those ponds.
Okay. Sir?
This is my last question. For the developer?
Name again. And this for me, questions for me.
Brian Brady, sixty eighteen Redfield Drive. Does the developer of the solar field need to have all of the proposed road instructed for his use?
I don't believe we've got to that point yet. Um, I would guess the answer is no.
Why would you get the answer from him?
No. We will get you the answer. Do you guys want to address it? You can. Go ahead.
So the, the solar farm after construction may require limited access for maintenance. Wouldn't access from.
It can be accessed from.
How much would be adequate? Then why are you building this road?
Sir?
Why is that road being built?
Turn it over to staff.
Requirement at the top.
There you go.
Requirement?
Requirement at the top.
What requirement?
We learned that last week.
Have you done an estimate on the cost of this road?
Sir, they have.
You have? But can you tell us how much that is?
Go ahead.
Right now we have an estimate between six hundred and eight hundred thousand.
Just for the road.
That's why they want it.
And the developers going to pay for that?
Requirement.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. You, go ahead.
Lorraine Arnold, sixty twelve Redfield Drive. Last time we came here, I would, I learned that you had not owned the property at that meeting. Are you now owners of that property?
We are residents of the town. Yes.
Okay, so the transaction is done.
Sir?
John Kristanza, six zero two two Redfield. I'd like to propose, pose the same question I posed at the last meeting. Because it's on the plains, should you do it? Now, for example, with the solar farm, there are plenty of other great spots in Farmington that this solar farm can go into. And away from residential areas. I mean, why, what is it about this piece of land that's got everyone here in this room so upset? Why it has to be built on that piece when there are so many other pieces?
Appreciate your feedback.
And when it comes to the, to the roads, because it's on the books and it's been there for thirty years, does that mean it shouldn't be built? Should you be mixing commercial and residential? Why do, you know? How, how do you come to this decision? Where, as I said, because you can do it, does it, does it mean you should?
Thank you. Anyone else in the room before I turn it to the online folks? Anyone else would like to speak for or against the application? Okay, online. Who would like to speak for or against the application? Anyone online like to speak for or against the application? Okay, I'll come back to the room one more time. Anyone like to speak for or against the application before we move on? Sir?
Yeah. Camerada six oh oh nine Redfield. John, I got your answer.
Yes.
Because they're going to build this road at their expense. That's right. That's why we're here.
Sir, speak to us. Okay.
That's why we're here.
I appreciate it. Sir?
Scott Pollak, mile six zero zero five Redfield. In regards to the road and I, I wasn't at the last meeting, why is it a town requirement that that road be? I'm sorry, so Collette, the commercial. It's not a planning board requirement. It's a town, a town requirement. You have to talk to the town supervisor and vote for it. I, we are a planning board. We deal with what has been given us. We deal with what's authorized in this property, those types of things. That's what we do. And I apologize. I'm not trying to push it off. I'm just trying to help you. Somebody said they didn't understand the process. This is a part of understanding the process. We understand it. So.
Anyone, anyone else like to make any comments before I turn? I want to turn one more time to staff for Redfield. Ma'am?
So Mary Pacola, six oh two six Redfield.
Okay.
Um, I want to know, is the road on the comprehensive plan?
Yes, I believe definitely is. They're on there for many of you.
I've worked for the village of Palmyra for twenty years. A comprehensive plan is a wish list.
Correct.
It is not something that has to be done.
Okay.
So.
Ma'am?
That's all.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any comments? Sir, you got one on in the back?
Paul Karpevsky, six zero zero eight Redfield. Is there any possibility in the next planning board meeting that we might uh, entice someone from the Town Board to be present?
Answer is no. Town Board does not have authority with the planning board. They, they appoint us and we do our thing. Certainly you can have meetings. You can come to Town Board meetings. You can have meetings with the town staff and the supervisor. Town Board met, yes, last night, right in this room and there was nobody here but me. So if you want to talk to the Town Board, there's multiple opportunities. They meet the second in Tuesday and fourth Tuesday. So coming up for Tuesday, Town Board will be right here, seven o'clock on Tuesday. Okay, anyone else have a comment? Ma'am?
Tim Spencer, five nine nine nine. I'm willing to admit my ignorance. How long does this process normally take? From when to, from the proposal to when the design is actually approved and finalized?
Let me give you a very wide range. Six months to two years. And the reason I say that is because we've seen it come as fast as six months or so. And we've had a solar project go two, two years, maybe a dozen longer. Uh, so it depends on the application. It depends on the environmental issues. It depends on many, many different things. So it, there is no rhyme or reason to the timeframe. Uh, but that's kind of, I don't know, staff is, am I kind of in the ballpark?
I, yeah, I'm.
I mean, six months is fast, two years is long, so somewhere as in between is probably a good guess to me.
Okay.
Okay? Ma'am?
Joanne Pollak, six zero zero five Redfield. You'll get to know my name. Um, a gentleman to, at the podium, said he is a resident now. Does he mean that he lives here in Farmington or he's a resident because they purchased that lot of land we're going to throw him?
Oh, I think you go ahead and answer that.
Resident was probably wrong.
Yes.
The landlord.
Property owner. We are a property owner. A, same.
That concerns me. Why doesn't he live here? If he's going to enjoy it monetarily?
Thank you for the feedback. Here you are. Okay. Anyone else have any comments to me before we turn it over? I want to go through staff one more time and just make sure there's nothing we left out. Okay, Ron?
I'm going to, I'm.
Dan, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll first here. Go ahead.
All right, uh, town staff and the town supervisor did meet with the HOA over at Redfield, uh, this pass Monday. Thank you. Uh, it's all blurred together. At that meeting, uh, which we consider a very good meeting and I, I think the HOA would agree with that. Uh, they did give us a proposal of, of re-road design. Uh, it does go onto a neighboring piece of property. Staff, I'm going to introduce it to the board tonight.
Right.
And I'll give you guys some comments.
We have not seen it yet.
Uh, and the reason the board hasn't seen it yet is because it did come in on Monday, uh, late and that's after the submittal time for this board. Uh, but it will be presented to them tonight. Town staff and the supervisor is working with the neighboring properties and the current applicant, uh, to try to see if there's some agreements of possibilities of moving this road. Uh, something to keep in mind is we are now engaging other landowners and those landowners have rights as well. Uh, the town can't enforce this road to be moved. Uh, this road is in an area that is accessible right now. If there's an agreement that can be come between the town and the other landowners that we will hopefully help with, um, then we're going to, we're going to seek out that option. Um, but we do want everybody here to know that we have worked with the HOA and that we're listening to your guys' concerns and we are trying to see what we can, we can come up with. Uh, I'll let Ron continue on that, uh, and I'm going to give the board some copies of the plan.
Yeah, I, I think it was a very productive meeting. I would refer the other people that were in attendance if they disagree with that uh, conclusion that I just made. But I think that, uh, you know, this is an opportunity for us to try to reach out and uh, seek some uh, commitments, if you will, which we don't know at this point, from these other property owners. The process, very similar to what we were very successful with over at Carmen's Way at three thirty-two. Uh, we needed a, a way out from Auburn Meadows to the streetlight there opposite Farm Brook. We were able to bring all of the property owners and their attorneys uh, quite a feat if you think about it in today's terms to consensus on what was best for the community. And we think we can uh, at least make the effort to uh, try to find an alternative here uh, to the design that has been proposed. So uh, I will be sending an email to those property owners tomorrow based on input I heard here tonight and uh, we will have some information for you coming up.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Part of the process.
Don't thank me yet. I, I haven't.
Part of the process. There's a process. Ma'am, go ahead.
Tim Spencer, five nine nine field. I'm also head of the HOA and yes, there was a meeting and I totally agree that it was a productive meeting. Um, and I did send a memo of all residents. The new residents would not have been on that list yet. Um, basically saying the same thing. We felt we were listened to. We felt we were respected. Um, and we were hopeful.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anything else on the environmental process there? Our engineer, anything you want to add to that?
I.
We've done it. Any, any time. So, okay. Or Tim, you got any comments for the residents?
At this point, I've uh, due to all the proposed applications and ready to go.
Okay, Doug?
I don't have anything at this time.
You know, and from the planning board, and we are missing two members tonight. They'll be back for the next meeting, but uh, we all get all the documents. We get all the comments. We watch the YouTube video. And uh, we take our documents very seriously and I apologize if you don't think we have empathy and that we don't care or that we're not listening. Uh, we do listen. We do care. It's our job to do the process the way it's been presented to us and it's set by New York State law. Um, and I apologize if that seems a little impersonal to you. Uh, I know you have emotions. I know you have issues and I know you have concerns and we take those seriously. But we have a process to be. Town has established this as a special use permitted, specially permitted use in this district. So it is zoned for this. Uh, so with that, we'll do what we can. We'll continue to go through the process. We have uh, how many residents do we have tonight? Two quarters, six, eight of them relating. And so basically it's um, a special use permit lead agency designation for both east and west as well as lead agency designation for the preliminary site plan east and west. Do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve the lead agency designations on all four applications? The move by Doug, second by?
Second by Tim.
Any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call vote, please.
Delucia?
Aye.
The leads, I haven't been here.
Aye. Okay, so we are now the lead agency for the environmental record. Um, and we will take that role very seriously. Next item up is the adjournment and continuation um, of the two special use permits for east and west and the preliminary site plan east and west. Do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve those adjournments and continuations? And the continuation is till, for nineteen?
June nineteenth.
June nineteenth.
It's, it's also directing the staff.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right.
To do the parts two and three.
And it establishes or require or requests the staff help provide us a draft, part two and three of the environmental record.
So we can come to that?
Of course. Absolutely. He can come to any meeting. There are no planning board meetings that are not open to the vote.
Oh.
Okay? And uh, so do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve those adjournments and continuation?
Motion by Tim.
Motion by Tim. Second by Doug. Clerk, take a roll. Clerk take a roll call vote please.
Delucia?
Aye.
Beats.
Aye.
Aye, okay. So we continue to the eighteenth.
Nineteenth.
Or nineteenth. We are going to probably discuss the proposal, if we've gotten any feedback yet on the proposal at our next meeting. So, with that, we'll see you guys either at the next meeting or the meeting after that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll take a little break and let you guys.
Our sister's somewhere already.
Move on. Okay, we're going to continue the meeting, so I'd like you to take your, uh, discussions outside, please. Okay, come on, take them outside, please, so we can get going.
Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Yeah, have a good day now. Okay, so let's get going here, uh, other board actions, um, I believe the Maddy, we're pulling the Maddy one?
Uh, Manning's powersports did not submit in time, and actually still has not submitted.
Okay.
So on request in the board to pull it at this point.
Okay.
And, uh, it's hopeful, I have talked to him, we have any issues with his, uh, engineer?
Okay, keep on heading out a way out, please.
Uh, so, since we anticipate down near June nineteenth meeting.
Okay.
To have this resolution come back.
Okay.
So I would like it at least pulled for the night.
All right.
Well, I, that's a comment.
And we administratively exist, excluding the public hearing for the Dever Potter two lot subdivision, so do I have a motion to close that public hearing?
I, I, I need a comment about Maddie's.
Uh, all right. Who wants to comment? Ron, go ahead, Ron. Maddie's. Yeah. All right, go ahead.
We met with Brandon Marcus and we identified several things that we thought they ought to look at.
Right.
On the site. There's lots of area of that site that is potentially available for display that's not being used for display.
Uh huh.
There's also pictures on that site that with curving and, and little landscaping to better display what they have. Uh, and those are the messages that we sent back, Augie and I, Brad Marcus, you know, uh, to, to deal with.
Right.
Uh, Dan has been pretty much made aware of what those were. And, uh, I believe that hopefully we'll see something improved there, uh, on that site.
Okay, thank you. So we pulled that one, so we are, we forgot to close the public hearing. Drive a motion to close public hearing on the Dever Potter two lot subdivision, so moved by Tim, seconded by Doug, any other comments? Clerk take a roll call vote.
Lucia?
Aye.
The beats.
Aye.
Aye, okay, administratively, now we take care of that. Um, the preliminary site plan for five nine nine eight state route ninety-six is good, deemed ready to go?
So, yeah, we're looking for you guys to deem it adequate to set a public hearing for that, uh, for June nineteenth. Also, uh, to send that to county for review.
Hey, you guys okay with that? All approved? Aye? There we go, we're good to go.
Just so everybody was aware, that is for lot one of the Redfield Grove, uh, base three.
That's a adjusting ranch house on ninety-six.
Oh, yeah, that's right, that's right. Okay. Um, open discussion, Ron?
Well, believe it or not, work has begun on constructing sidewalks.
Hey, nice.
Over on forty-one, out there. About six hundred millimeter feet.
Uh huh.
First thing we discovered is, uh, between the time that the design information was gathered and completed, the county put in a catch basin over there that so we got to find a solution to get around that. And the other thing. I think they do. Uh, the other thing is that there's a hole that needs to be relocated, it's a tunnel Farmington hole. Um, R G E provides the electricity from over there at the corner of Com Lake and forty-one. So we reached out to the representative of NIFCA, who's the government liaison person. And hopefully we'll be getting that, uh, hole removed, uh, from that area, moved back about three feet out of the alignment of the sidewalk.
When I've been through that, I see your second done.
No hic, no hiccups. And you can see over there on forty-one that they have started flagging, uh, the, the remainder of the sidewalk improvements between the Auburn Trail and where the Monarch, man, or excuse me, not Monarch, where the, uh, Auburn, or Hickory.
Hathaway.
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 So many damn.
I know, I understand, Ron, Ron, holy crap.
So, uh, those will be the first things. They're working on the design for the pedestrian bridge bicycle crossing of Beaver Creek.
Okay.
And that'll be coming along shortly.
Okay.
Other than that, we, uh, have a meeting coming up with the applicant for the Whitestone incentive zoning project. They want to discuss some of the, uh, proposed permitted uses over there. And we hope to have that meeting resolved so the town board can hopefully make a decision at the next meeting. So move forward, get it to you guys.
Good. Keep us up to speed on any discussions or where that discussions are leading on the, uh, roadway change for these guys. I know you usually keep me up to speed on things anyway, but that way I can keep the board up to speed on them too.
Yeah, I think that, you know, it's, it's good that they came and requested, uh, town to get involved and helping.
Yeah, exactly.
We think there is ultimately a solution there that will benefit everybody.
Yep. Okay, any else, Ron?
No.
Dan?
All right, your next meeting, um.
Fifth of June.
Fifth of June. We're doing the five lot, uh, preliminary subdivision down on the corner there of County Road eight and Holt's.
That's where Adrian's gonna build his house.
Yes, I misspoke in your last meeting, said it was going to be on for tonight. Um, after the meeting, I had reviewed the resolutions and actually we had put it on for the, the June fifth.
Okay.
And, uh, obviously tonight you continued Fowler to that next meeting as well. Uh, so that's your, your two items on for June fifth.
Right.
June nineteenth is ob, obviously a little bit of a heavier lift. You got a bunch of things coming back and.
Right.
Um, so, just so you guys have aware of that, um, also, I feel that we're making progress in the department, uh, getting things posted. But we ran into a little hiccup. I have people out on training and somebody, uh, is out sick longer than I anticipated, so, again, if you're not getting something, let me know. Uh, we're, we're trying to do our best and, uh, I appreciate Ron, he's stepped up dramatically in helping us cover and try to get you guys ready for these meetings, so, uh, between this meeting and the Z B A, we're, we're juggling a lot of things and uh, I do appreciate you guys giving us some leeway and trying to get everything posted correctly for you, but if you see something missing, please let me know.
Right.
Um, and we'll get it corrected, um, because some things are slipping through the cracks.
Right, and so the board knows, Ron and I had a conversation as we get close to the environmental record for Fowler. We, we, uh, have been requested to provide a letter to the Z B A on the Fowler application, so we need to start thinking about what we want to have in there. Certainly, I want to put in the information, uh, what types of things we'll be looking for in the site plan and that will, what's the right word, stand the test of time. Um, things like accessory structures and different things like that, if in fact, I mean, so that the zoning board can look at that kind of stuff. And I know Fowler can put on, uh, deed restrictions, but we all know what deed restrictions mean, that means nothing unless someone's taken to court. So, uh, we just need to think about what we want to tell the Z B A, so that when they make their decision, they have our feedback, they have support. So, start thinking about that if you would, uh, as we go forward, um. We're going to talk about, on the fifth, we'll talk about all the different things that, uh, we now have from the Fowler piece. Where are we going to be ready with the part two and three on the fifth? Or the?
I encourage you to take a look at the two maps.
Right.
You have received from Tunisia, which
ident, ident.
Show the soil. Say they identify the soil locations on the property. Show the proposed location of the dwellings on the property. And compare those to the soils report that Mr. Baker has done. To make sure you're comfortable that those maps reflect what Mr. Baker is saying in his soil report. If we find that it is not clear, we can always ask for additional information. But I think that it is more complete now with that report than what we have had to date. So in order for us to move to the next stage, step further, we have to basically accept or reject, uh, that information.
Information. Then we can move to the next.
Then we can move to the next step, which is preparing the parts two and three of the environmental record. Okay? The zoning board of appeals, they meet next Monday night, all they're going to do is kick the can down the road, continue the so we get some kind of feedback from you guys, uh, and then we'll move forward.
Okay. And I'll work with Ron a little bit. If you guys have some feedback on Fowler and what we want to tell the Z B A, send it to me and I'll be working with Ron after the fifth to get that, uh, letter going. Okay, anything else, Dan? Tim?
Um. So we're moving along with the pavilion, hopefully that will be paved here shortly. Uh, Monday, we are scheduled now to do the cul-de-sac replacement cycle on Town Line Road between three thirty-two and County Road eight. That's starting Monday, could be one day process. Later on, it'll get hot with asphalt and then
Oh.
All the Town Line Road have been gunned from one end to the other, it's going to be, wait for a long time.
All right. Engineering Lance?
Uh, you know, M R B group is, is appreciative of the town of Farmington. We have a number of projects that we're working on, I don't have anything specific. I know that we put a proposal in for assisting the town with a park and rec master plan. Um, I figured Ron would chime in on that one at some point, so, uh, I know that's going to be progressing, uh, sooner rather than later. Uh, I've been working with Dan, the MS four officer, uh, to keep the town, uh, moving forward. And the guided direction that D E C is looking for MS four communities to go in, they've set some parameters that each of the communities are obligated to adhere to, and they're basically checkpoints. So, we're coming almost to the halfway point of the year, so, uh, Dan and I have been working closely together uh, about establishing some, some line items that we would like the town to accomplish this year to, to keep it moving forward, so we're busy with that as well.
Well, just follow up on the, uh, park and rec master plan update.
Yep.
Um, there will be a steering committee, uh, established.
Mm-hmm.
If the planning board would like to have someone serve on that, let us know.
I think we nominate both Adrian and Aaron.
Yeah, that's what they get for showing up.
Exactly, they can be voluntold.
The hard part is that there were several, several individuals who indicated on their surveys that they would like to be ser, uh, serve on this committee. Uh, it would take this room and probably a highway garage to conduct those meetings, so, uh.
So let's appoint Aaron. Let's appoint Aaron. If he has a problem with that, then we'll, we'll get Adrian.
Okay.
Okay, I, I continue to work with staff whenever needed, when, you know, we talk on a regular basis, including tonight, and Ron and I had a conversation before the meeting, trying to get things straight, we knew certainly about the road proposal that went on neighboring property. Um, we had talked about that, and since they brought it up the way they did. Um, I am struggling a little bit with trying to keep them focused, it's not working. Um, certainly, we could have cut down on the time a little bit by reinforcing a three-minute window, but I don't think we're quite there yet. Um, we start getting a lot more rambling, we'll probably do that, but I thought, you know, hey, we went a little, about an hour, so it wasn't too bad. Um, considering they're all upset. We'll get to the point where, once the environmental record's done and we decide whether we can or cannot shift the road. It is what it is, you know, I hate to say it, but, uh, we'll, we'll begin to try to make it better. I would be very interested, um, in looking at maybe some, uh, noise reduction along the curve, if we have to keep the road the way it is, I don't know if there's any space to do that. Um, I mean, we're going to have a sidewalk there, so there's obviously some space. Uh, so we'll have to talk about that kind of thing. Um, yeah, we'll just do what we can. I mean, we've got the information now, uh, about how bad battery storage is and how bad solar panels are into the groundwater, which nobody drinks groundwater over there anyway. Um, so, you know, it is what it is. So, we'll, uh, we'll look at it and go forward, okay? Anybody have anything else? Motion adjourned by Tim, seconded by Doug, all favor?
Aye, aye, aye.